I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for February first, 2021. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have a roll, please.
Allison.
Here.
Plissip.
Maggie's frozen.
Please, sir.
Gustafson.
Here.
Penny.
Here.
Shalor.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Southern President.
We have a quorum. While I have a chance, I would like to also advise you that with us tonight, we have Deputy Chief Jason Norton. Chief Thomas is away, and the Deputy Chief is giving us some time tonight to stand in for the Chief. We're really happy to have him, and I'd like to welcome Jason to our meetings. And he'll be, I believe he'll be joining us. Will he be joining us for a budget meeting too, Jason, or? Not sure.
Wherever the Chief needs me, as to be determined.
Okay. All right. That takes us to questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. I don't see anyone in our audience, so I can't believe we have anything under that. It takes us to approval of minutes. Like a motion to approve the minutes for the January eighteenth, 2021 city council meeting. Motion to approve. Moved by Alderman Shauer, seconded by Alderman Penny. If none, the roll.
Shalor.
Aye.
Penny.
Aye.
Gustafson. Plissip.
Aye.
Bellseth.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Southern President.
The minutes have been approved. It takes us to receiving communications. Do any of the Aldermen have any communications they'd like to share with the council? Alderman, please stand.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I received two pieces of communication. First one is from David Flirup from the thousand block of Sawyer. Unfortunately, his mailbox was a victim of this weekend's mass, massive amount of snow. So, correct me if I'm wrong, usually the city comes by and will correct those and fix them once they have a chance and once all the snow melts.
That is correct.
Secondly, I received communication from Mrs. Hidzek from the eight thousand block of Sawyer. Some residents that are still living out their garbage twenty-four hours after garbage pickups. Just a reminder, I know you guys done plenty of reminders over the last month, so she just wanted to pass that along. So, I'll forward the email to Lisa. Take a look at it later.
Tom, if you could forward it to me, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any communications? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a communication from Mr. Paul Fung on Bantry Court. With all the snow that we came in, tight cul-de-sac, driveways got blocked in. But not a lot that can be done because we have no place to put the center stone. Emailed Chris Strom, emailed Mr. Gomback, and we were able to get that back up, answer back out to the resident.
Anything else, Joe? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, I talked about some work that was being done, especially in Ward Five and my corridor area in the Terra Hill subdivision with Comcast. Though, you know, work continued because they're upgrading lines and cables and fiber optics. But it did become a situation where a lot of people were experiencing outages, especially during the week with working remote and e-learning. So, we did reach out, I did, and the city. Lisa Clem and city staff reached out to our liaisons. They called me right away, and in conversations, we were able, you know, they were getting near the end, but they had about a week's worth of work left. They were able to shift their schedule to start working in the early hours of the morning and, you know, later into the day when school would not be impacted or work. And it definitely has made a difference, but several residents had reached out, you know, pressing concern. And Comcast did say that each resident individually can reach out via their app or by calling to get some type of retribution for the outages in the time.
Thank you, Mayor, for your work on that, it's much appreciated. Anyone else?
Welcome.
All right, that takes us to the mayor's report. And the first item under our mayor's report is our EDC's yearly progress report. You're going to see a PowerPoint. Just a little history here. Two years ago, when I was elected, one of the things that occurred to me was army for a Economic Development Committee. I discussed this with Mr. Vanna, and we brought it to the council. We put together an ordinance that created an Economic Development Committee with primary purpose to work with the city for maintaining and enhancing the business community. According to the ordinance, the EDC is supposed to give a report at the ten-year mark. The one-year mark was last June, and we did not meet during the summer. So, the EDC did not resume their meetings until September, although I believe they've had this report for a while. So, tonight, the Economic Development Committee with Tina Delkey as the chairperson would like to report to the entire city council their work since June of 2019. With that, I believe I'm turning, is that, am I turning it over to Tina?
Are you turning it over to me? You were kind of frozen a little bit.
No, I'm turning it over to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending. It's our pleasure to present the EDC little PowerPoint we put together for you. Our mission is to help create opportunities for economic development through desirable business growth, expansion, retention, and attraction in working as partners to develop a climate that's conducive in maintaining the quality of life in the city of Darien. We were established in June of 2019. It is for a two-year term appointed by the mayor. So, what we're going to talk about today is the accomplishments that we've made, and Bob Han is going to cover that. We're going to talk about the projects that we were involved with, which Nick Pitzer is going to tell you about that. We're going to talk about the collaboration with the businesses and the organizations that we've done and that Lou Mallers will talk about. And then Angelo Ambrogno is going to talk about our ongoing focus and what we're looking forward to and what our role will be as we, as we continue. And at the end, Matt Weberling is going to take questions and any feedback that you may have. Also, he's going to be watching anything that comes in through the chat box if you have any comments as we go through the presentation. So, I'm going to turn this over to Bob to get us started.
Thanks, Tina. I'm happy to be able to give at least the first section of the accomplishments that the EDC has achieved. We were asked to engage, and that our committee did. One of the things that came out was that, as you can read, we needed a consistent process for evaluating economic development projects. And also, as you can read, we did that. We created a standard application form, developed a weighted scale that we engaged the city staff in assisting us with and even the Chamber of Commerce. And then we updated the city website with EDC information with web links. So, our connectivity to the business community is now formal, as you requested. The second thing that was important to us was to reach out to all of the businesses, as many as we could. Obviously, the virus limited a lot of the face-to-face opportunities. But you'll hear later that I think the group of us connected with several hundred of the businesses with business licenses within the city of Darien. And then finally, Lisa and I were privileged to be named chairman and treasurer of the initiative for the Census Bureau. I wish I could say I personally did something on that other than lend my name, but that's all I did. So, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, Nick, you want to go over the projects?
Yeah, of course. Hi, everybody, can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me? I just want to make sure, can everybody hear me?
You're broken up.
Am I breaking up?
Yes, you are.
A little bit, yes.
Little quiet.
All right, can you guys hear me better?
A tiny bit, but still not that great.
Let me see what I can do.
He's on the wrong slide and showing.
We need to go to this, yeah, yeah. This we go.
Yes, projects, thank you.
You guys hear me a little bit better or no?
Yes.
Yes. Beautiful, sorry about that, guys. Yeah, so thanks for having me. I'll quickly break down the projects that the EDC was involved in. As you can read on your slide, first and foremost, we started by creating and distributing and reviewing results from a residential survey, basically assessing citizens' shopping and entertainment habits. We got great results from the survey, mainly identifying dining and entertainment, whereas eighty and eighty-six percent of the survey results came in that they were not satisfied with dining and entertainment as far as options in Darien and vice versa. Eighty-six percent said they were satisfied with banking and financial services choices in Darien. Second main project, we developed a tier system for business outreach categorized by business sector and their priority status. This was a main focal point of the EDC. Started with a letter from the mayor, the local business owners, basically just checking in with, to the overall health of their business, highlighting any current struggles and really just trying to find out how the city of Darien can help them, you know, succeed in the future. We gave local business owners through this outreach program a chance to voice any concerns, recommendations to the city, and let us know where we can help them as a volunteer on behalf of the EDC. This business outreach program obviously turned into more of a well-being check-in the second quarter of last year when the pandemic hit. I thought it was crucial on behalf of the EDC to reach out to local business owners, especially the restaurant owners in the city of Darien, just seeing kind of how they were doing, what percentage of their revenue might be down. Do they even foresee their business making it through? You know, how could they really rate the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic? And just basically how we could be there for them, you know, as a volunteer of the EDC and the assistance. The third main project was hearing presentations mainly from Carriage Greens and other local businesses and just basically gave feedback to the city on the incentive proposals. We heard presentations ranging from Carriage to Brookhaven, to the Lee School property, cannabis establishments, Chucks Express, and Celine, Celestine Salon, just to name a few of the proposals. And lastly, we provided comments to cities, businesses, and residential marketing videos created by the new Al Kai Media Group and just basically assisted the mayor in those endeavors. So, that's basically it for the projects.
Okay, Lou, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Good evening, everybody. A lot of what Nick has said is really very evident in the support that we have given to all of the stores and businesses in Darien. One of the things that I really wanted to say was the results and the response that we received from everybody that we connected with and reached out to, which is extremely, really positive. They were very pleased that the city took the time to reach out to them, to talk to them, to find out exactly what some of the concerns and issues were and exactly what we did. And it says we did talk with John Manos with the, you can certainly see what happened.
Lou, Lou, you're going, you're coming in and out.
Sorry about that, not sure why. Is that any better?
Much better.
Much better.
Okay, I just guess I had to get closer to the screen. I didn't want you to see my big face. But anyway, Brookhaven has been very responsive and needless to say with everything that's going on there. John Manos has been very pleased with everything that we're doing and being the focal point or one of the focal points of the city of Darien, I think that's helping tremendously. I had a lot of time to spend with Brian Broderick at Carriage Greens with some of the things that they're looking at. Certainly, what the city did to help them was very well appreciative. Their business is growing, the golf course is doing tremendous. The restaurants are in the process of going through some changes internally there, but it's all very, very positive. Again, Brian was extremely pleased with the fact that we did reach out to them. Chuck, invited Chuck, he had a chance to talk with Chuck. Again, he just couldn't believe how much the city has done to help out and just very, very pleased. Then April's been very involved in that. In that effect, but I think the biggest thing that we really need to take a look at is the interest that positive responses that we've gotten from the businesses. I don't remember the name of the bookstore, Mr. Mayor, but I know you visited with the reused bookstore there over Chestnut. They were at one point-
Frugus, frugal mews.
Thank you. They were at one point being courted by one of the shopping centers on the west side of Mont Road and offering them a financial opportunity. But after the mayor went in there and spoke with them, they were just so impressed with the fact of what the city has done to reach out to them that they stayed. So, the general feeling from all the businesses that we have talked to is very, very positive and very, very pleased with that that we have done for them, and we continue to do that. Okay.
Okay, Angelo?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Angelo Ambrogno. I'd like to discuss three areas of our business outreach program, what we're doing currently, and also what we plan ongoing for the future. The first objective and one of the main goals that the mayor illustrated for us was to contact as many of our Darien businesses as we could to, one, collect their input on their business needs, their concerns, and also their long-term outlook. So, over the past several months, we've been in contact with many businesses and had a lot of meaningful conversations. As you can imagine, the primary topic for 2020 was coping with COVID-19 and the pandemic. I know it was a top priority for Mayor Joe and a focus that he was really concerned about. He urgently wanted to know how the businesses were being affected by the pandemic. I know he was involved in multiple sessions with mayors from neighboring villages, so he's really concerned and interested in that information. And ultimately, we were able to present that to him so he could present it to the governor. The main takeaway, and many of the members echo this as well, is that so many business owners were happy that we even reached out to them. They were very appreciative and just to know that we cared and took the time to ask them how they were doing. That was overwhelmingly the number-one feedback that we got, and I think it said quite a bit. So, that was excellent. Going forward, we want to build on that platform of communication. So, for 2021 and beyond, we'd like to continue with those conversations with our business owners. And also, we'd like to extend an invitation to them. So, if you're a business owner in Darien, please contact us, contact the city with any questions or concerns that you have or any feedback that you want to provide, and we can in turn forward that and address those concerns for you and pass them along to Mayor Joe. Finally, the third objective moving forward is that we'd like to get more involved and engaged with the Chamber of Commerce in Darien. And ultimately, the goal is to work together with the intent to bring new and fresh ideas to continue the purpose of the organization, which is to be a useful resource and a vibrant network for businesses in Darien and the surrounding area. Now, I can pass it over to Matt for any questions or concerns that anybody has.
Hey, Tina, can I just say one quick thing?
Yes.
One of the things that was extremely, extremely well-received was the tax rebate that we provided to the businesses within, within Darien. That was, that was a big gift from their perspective, something they did not expect, but were very, very pleased. So, that's something I think that's helped doing what we're trying to do here and continue to help to grow the businesses and retain the businesses that we have in Darien.
Absolutely, thank you.
So, at this time, we'd like to open for any questions, comments, concerns, feedback? Does anybody have any particular questions about what we've done, what we intend to do in the future, how we've done it? We're open to any questions. Thank you. Mr. Gustafson?
Yeah, this is Alderman Gustafson. Recently, the state of Illinois announced now that they're getting back on track to the issuance of additional marijuana licenses. What is the EDC now plans on attracting those businesses into Darien?
I know that there was kind of a wide variety of views about that. It seemed to me that the city was generally open to it, but I feel like there was some just concerns, you know, a few concerns from members, members that have talked to friends and neighbors. I know that this is a very contentious issue.
Yeah, but it was, it was approved, so the door is open. So, now it's just a matter of, you know, we're looking at seven, eight, nine-hundred thousand dollars of annual revenue that we're looking to be able to get from, from those businesses, if not more. And I think it would just be ridiculous for us now to turn our back to that when we've got a place like the Steak and Shake Building sitting there, prime piece of property, ready for that type of business to come in and not attract and go after, after that type of business.
I very much understand your perspective. I know that in our initial conversations, location was a very, very large conversation point. The suitability and appropriateness of the location was a, was a major factor. I know that, you know, the city has obligations that are growing into the future related to just general operating expenses as well as some pension expenses. And I would very much tend to agree with you. I'm just going to share a personal view. I would, I would tend to agree that-
We've got a desperate need for a new municipal services building. And in order to fund, fund that building, I mean, the marijuana revenue could easily, easily fund Dan's brand-new building. So, I think we've got to take a real hard look at, you know, getting that revenue.
I think, I think part of the, I'm sorry, you know.
Go ahead, Lou.
I think part of the issue, and this came up at our Planning and Zoning Commission, when we first sat down to take a look at this, there were a number of locations that were requested or were nominated for us to take a look at. Some we passed on, some we didn't pass on.
Lou, you want to speak closer to the computer?
Some we passed on, some we didn't pass on. But I think the key thing here with the city approving the marijuana opportunity.
Can't hear him.
You're cutting out again, sorry.
That information was given to the state of Illinois, and the state of Illinois has the responsibility now for determining where those locations will be. So, at this point here, I think, you know, our, our contact really needs to be with the state, not sure where they are with this at this point.
Illinois, they're just going to issue the licenses, and it's up to the people get the license to be able to go wherever they want, wherever they can go.
Well, they only have five hundred licenses that they're issuing throughout the entire state.
The state's not going to mandate where they go.
No, but, but, but the, the-
Okay. First, Mr. Vanna, and then Alderman Vaughn. Brian? You're muted.
Yeah, the, the CDC is, and with the fine presentation tonight was a lot of things they were doing. And Eric, I think your question was specifically, what are they doing for the marijuana? But they haven't done, I mean, they have not been given the responsibility or even asked to look at specific businesses such as the one you are mentioning or any other ones. So, I think that's more of a discussion at some point for the city council to decide on how we're going to recruit all of them and what are their priorities. You know, at this point, I know Dan has been in contact, a couple of businesses, and those have been on hold. But again, I, I don't think that the EDC has actually focused on yet. And you're asking, were you asking them to do that or were you asking?
Well, I mean, they're out there supposed to be going at and recruiting businesses into Darien. Well, that, that is a business to recruit. I don't think you're going to find a bigger revenue generator than that piece of business. Let's be honest, you're not going to find it.
And, and, yeah, I just wanted to add that definitely in the beginning, when this was being voted upon at the Brookhaven Plaza and everything. So, basically, what will happen is we work with the mayor to, you know, get the latest on, on what is happening with businesses and whatever the council is doing as well. In addition to what, you know, if, if we find a topic, we'll be listening to the council meetings to see where things go. But, and I know that in the beginning, we talked a lot about marijuana. Like I said, again, that was pretty much before we got, you know, we did the approval as a city to allow them in. But really, since then, to Brian's point, we haven't done too much with that, and we do work with the city for some of those agenda items. But, you know, other businesses, you know, I wanted to share in our November twentieth, nineteen, twenty nineteen meeting is the full-blown survey that we did, which, you know, talks about what the residents do want in Darien, and there was definitely some, some comments revolving around the marijuana, mostly not happy about it, not wanting it. But again, it's, it's something that, since that is definitely a, a sensitive, but it is a high-dollar amount. That is something we would work with the city on.
Yeah, and Dan's been contacted by a few places, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm correct, Dan, and stuff. So, I think there's, there's definitely interest there depending on if those specific people end up with a license. That's the big open question right now, is who gets the license?
Who gets them? And I know that other neighboring communities are, you know, opening and all that, so that's all pressure too.
Right, oh, absolutely. There's a, there's a lot of competition.
Mr. Vanna, he already answered my question, so I have no questions.
Okay.
What did I answer, Lester, son?
You were, you were, you were saying the role of the EDC, like it's, they haven't crossed that bridge yet. It's not really their responsibility, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Alderman, close that.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the EDC, Lou Mallards, Nick, and Tina, everyone on the team. You know, this past year has been very challenging, and for you guys to still go out and get this done, I am, I am very impressed. The question I have for you, and I believe it was mentioned in the survey feedback, and let me make sure I'm understanding that what you, what you said is that eighty to eighty-five percent of people would like to see more restaurants or different restaurants? Is that, that what they're, what the community was saying earlier? And what can we do to bring different restaurants as well? Because I get that quite often, that we have too many chain restaurants. They'd like to see things similar to Chucks, maybe Darien Chop Suey, some of the high foods. How do we get these unique restaurants, maybe that are not non-branded into Darien? What does it take? Because it seems like that's what residents are asking for.
Yeah, so the, one of the things that we got related to feedback and what we've discussed was one of the disadvantages of Darien is that we don't have the downtown on the railroad tracks. And so, one, you know, I'm, I think Tom has small children- And so one, you know, I'm, I think Tom has small children, I know Lester does, you know, people, people like me. I, I know that I personally would like to see something where you can kind of dine and entertain in Darien for the evening without having to go out of the town. And one of the things that we were focused on was you were very much accurate on the non-chain restaurants. People want the mom and pop owners, they want the personality. And one of the things that we were kind of discussing was maybe, you know, not necessarily going to like a Gibson scale, but, but something more in the, the kind of upper middle range, white tablecloth, things that, and on the other side of that would be more related to family entertainment, having an option. You know, I know that there's kind of a fun zone right up on, on 63rd and Downers Grove, and there's all kinds of other, I mean, Darien doesn't have as much space as a Lombard or a Downers Grove for these types of things. But we were really all in agreement with, you know, the dining and entertainment options and going for making Darien a little bit more of a destination and then also drawing people in, not only providing more for the residents of Darien, but also providing more to draw in other people from surrounding communities. So I think that, you know, we're very much on, on the same page as far as wanting to see Darien step up a little bit on, on the dining side, maybe add an option for family entertainment. And so.
Yeah, if I can add to that too, I think that, you know, what we got to the point where we're identifying things, we're talking to these businesses. We've got a couple of leads where, you know, some of these businesses are saying that they want to either expand or contrast, or looking to invest in maybe a restaurant or something in town and are looking for vacant, you know, places to do that. So we're kind of got our ears on that. But also pre-COVID, you know, we also have some connections on the team where, you know, we know some of the property managers that, that own our centers in Darien. So the, the problem became, or one of the challenges became is then COVID hit. And, you know, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of interest, I would imagine, you know, seeing what their fellow restaurateurs or entertainment establishments are going through. There's, there's not going to be a lot of appetite at the moment. But what we'll do is we'll get these leads that we're doing. We have, like I said, people that can connect to property managers, you know, the people that we're talking. And then Brian Gay, who is not able to be with us today. I mean, he brings a wealth of background on his Invest Aurora. So he's been sharing his best practices also of how, how they're managing in Aurora and also how they're trying to expand some of the retention and the, you know, bring your business to Darien, for example, to, to do different reiterations of the shop local program. So, you know, to answer your question, we have all these, these resources that we're working with, but as far as hitting that target right now with COVID, we, we haven't gotten there. But we continue to, you know, explore and, you know, try to fill in that gap that we definitely have identified.
Well, I just want to give, I just want to give one example of a conversation that Dunkin' Donuts, as we know, is moving into the outbuilding at Brookhaven. And one of the, one of the, a family that owns a small, kind of a quick service restaurant just outside of town was looking at putting a, kind of a, a white tablecloth Italian concept in there. But one of the things that they were looking for was, and the reason that I think the city shied away from it was they were essentially looking to not really put a whole lot of their own personal assets into, you know, moving forward or taking on kind of a, a large expense as far as starting something new. And then obviously with the pandemic, starting a restaurant is a very, very challenging endeavor.
Okay. And then I know, I noticed I was reading the news last week, there was a indoor soccer stadium or indoor type of facility that didn't pass DuPage County. Is that something that would be, I guess, some entertainment? Or is there opportunity maybe to pursue that one by chance? It's very similar, it looks like to like the Compass Arena in Willerbrook that has food and beverage indoors and athletics, which would be sort of family entertainment and food. I seen that didn't get support. Maybe that's something that would fit Darien potentially. I'm not, I'm not sure, but I seen that in the news recently.
Tom, to answer that, that was a private enterprise.
Oh, okay.
That business was not going to operate through the general entertainment of the public. They were going to run that as a training facility with teams coming in there for practices and for training. And that was going to be a money-making endeavor for them and not necessarily entertainment location for the team.
But I know that what we're doing is, you know, monitoring some of these bigger box areas, these bigger square foot and trying to see what we can, we can do with that. So, you know, absolutely, that's, that's definitely on the top of our list. We want more entertainment, something for kids, soccer is huge, you know? And I know that the sportsplex, you know, it, it used to be a little more soccer area and now it's mostly hockey. So I think that there's definitely some room for, room for growth.
You know, with that, I'm going to conclude our, Mary, you had a question? Sorry. Can't hear you, Mary. Mary, you're muted, Mary.
My bad. I usually don't mute, so I didn't know to do that. Um, I just wanted to say it's been my pleasure to serve as the city council liaison to the Economic Development Committee. They're a very dynamic group. They've had some great dialogues. They're looking to do a lot of great things and I think it's going to be a huge asset to us to have such a, an active, engaged group working on our behalf.
And, and I want to add, I want to add, first of all, you know, on behalf of the EDC, it's been a privilege to be on the committee and we want to thank the city staff, particularly Brian Vanna and Lisa Clem for all their help. And then of course, Mary Sullivan, you've been instrumental in, in helping us. You always bring great ideas to the table too. So, so it was all good. And what I want to say is remember this is, this is the first time we've had this. So if there's any later thoughts with comments or branching out of, of where you see you want us to go from here, we're definitely welcome to that. But one of the things that we've identified is, is more reporting and bringing that back to the city and to the residents. So things like maybe more stats that we can provide so we can show what kind of investors, maybe have grown with the city. We want to kind of do maybe some more trending on vacancies or occupancies and maybe break them out by office versus retail and, you know, just get a little more metrics surrounding the whole city as a whole. So if you have anything to add, please, please do so. Again, it's, it's our first time through this and then the pandemic hit. So we really hit the ground running and then switched gears a little bit into the retention stage because that's very important. We don't want to lose anybody. And hopefully they can hang on, you know, until we, we get this vaccine going and, you know, things are starting to open a little bit. So I hope and we pray and we got some feedback that, you know, some of these businesses are hanging on. So, so we really hope that they will survive in the end and that would be excellent news for us.
I would just like to commend the EDC for their work. I've had the opportunity to join you for almost all of your meetings. I, I think last year during COVID, the fact that you were going out and you were doing businesses, you were a great assistance to me. Mr. Vanna and I several times would sit down and talk about how I could call these businesses on the phone and I can go out and visit some, which I did. But you guys actually went out there and met with probably several hundred businesses, business owners within Darien, which is a service that we could not do on our own. So that was an invaluable service to the city of Darien. And I think the fact that you went out there and let them know that we were concerned about them really spoke to how Darien really is as a city in terms of concern for its business community. And I, I think the reason a lot of them are still around is because of the work you did and possibly the rebate and some of your, that we did. So congratulations to you. I hope, you know, as you said, Tina, you know, it's a two-year appointment. I'm hoping all of you decide to take another two years. So we'll be talking about that in the near future. Many thanks to you. And if you want to stay with us for the rest of our city council meeting, you're welcome to. If not, you have my thanks and I can give the thanks of the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I do want to just say real quick that, you know, last but not least, the mayor really, you know, you were so invaluable by attending, I'd say most of these meetings, if not all. And, you know, that's what made it beautiful too, is because you were, you were gracious of your time to be able to, you know, bridge that, what the city is doing to communicate that to EDC. So we were on the cusp of some of, some of these ideas coming in. And, you know, that just shows that you took your own time and you had a big heart in this. So special thanks to you.
Thank you, Tina. Thank you, group. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have a nice evening.
Thanks, guys.
Guys, that takes us to, back to our mayor's report. I want to give a brief update on.
Thanks, Brian. We appreciate it.
Program. As most of you know, last week, we hit tier one. Tier one is within phase three of the, of the historic Illinois plan. There's tier one through four. We're currently in tier one. Tier one allows for all bars and restaurants to close at 11:00 PM. And it allows indoor dining, 25 guests for 25% capacity. It allows an establishment offering indoor service. It says they must serve food. It provides for reservations only with two hour maximum duration, maximum four people per party. And all bar and restaurant patrons should be seated at tables as far as bars are concerned. No order inceding or congregating at a bar, right there and that's supposed to have bar stools. Tables should be six feet apart. No dancing or standing indoors, reservations required for each party. And while some of these sound restrictive, you have to remember, we haven't had indoor dining for a while. And so now we're going to be able to go back to indoor dining. And if you talk to some of our restaurant owners, even 25 guests or 25% capacity is going to help them. So these are, these are restrictions, to be quite honest with you, that came apart, came about as a result of our Metropolitan Mayor's caucus task force, which I have the privilege of serving on. And what we did is we created a statement of interest that we submitted to Governor Whitaker's office. And what you see here are the recommendations we've made to allow restaurants to open up again, to allow bars to open up again. So these are standards that we created. Now, we are currently at 7.1% positivity rate. We need to move to 6.5% positivity rate or lower to go into phase four. And phase four provides more allowance with regard to restaurants, bars and other activities within the city. And we're hoping that within a week or so, that we have that positivity rate down below 6.5 or at 6.5. We, we meet the standards for ICU and we meet the standards for hospitalization. We are not quite there with the positivity rate. So we're hoping that within a week or so, we can proudly announce that we are now phase four and our restaurants and bars could provide more services and our community could provide more services. So we're very pleased with that and, and we're hoping that people continue to wear their masks, continue to practice social distancing and hopefully we'll be in phase four in about a week or so. With that said, I'd like to give you an update on vaccinations. And I'm going to read a statement here. Said, "I realize there is tremendous confusion in our community regarding one's ability to apply for, be scheduled and have the vaccination administered to them. Our office here at City Hall receives calls each day from residents, especially our seniors, asking when, where, and how they will get their COVID vaccination shot. We try to provide the best information available to us through the DuPage, DuPage Health Department. I meet via a Zoom meeting each Monday morning along with other mayors as we receive updated data and have an opportunity to ask many of the questions that our residents are interested in hearing. Now, I realize that many residents are not necessarily interested in DuPage County's vaccination rates or plans. They are more interested in when they're going to be getting their shots. Just the same, better understand when you become eligible. It helps understand DuPage County Health Department's plan for getting the vaccine into arms as, as quickly as possible." So here are some answers to those very concerned residents. DuPage County has been receiving and distributing an average of 14,000 vaccines per week. As of January 29th, approximately 65,102 doses have been administered to DuPage County residents and 17,989 have been fully vaccinated. Now, you're going to kind of laugh at this next figure. That translates into 2.11% of our DuPage County residents being fully vaccinated at this time. And as hard as it may be to believe, that 2.11% is one of the highest vaccination rates in the state of Illinois. Each county in the state has their own unique plan for distributing and administering the vaccine. Some counties have very centralized models where residents go to one location for shots. You'll find that up in Lake County. While others such as DuPage County have what's called a decentralized model, where we currently have 96 approved sites that have or will be receiving the vaccine for distribution. As of January 25th, DuPage County began administering the vaccine to individuals 65 and older, along with frontline workers. This populate, the population for the 1B category, which includes frontline workers and 65 years of age and older, is 268,000 people in DuPage County. Now, if DuPage County received 18,000 doses per week, this population could be annihilated before the end of April. But one of the major issues is we don't receive 18,000 doses a week in DuPage County. There have been weeks where we've received 5,000 doses, other weeks where we received 12,000 doses. A lot of this is dependent on our getting the doses. And I can assure you, according to the department, that every dose of vaccine that we've received in DuPage County is being used. The county receives its share of the vaccine through the state and disperses it to hospitals, pharmacies, outpatient clinics, large employers, as well as distributing some of the vaccine through their own facility. Now, they are going to be opening up a centralized vaccination center on the DuPage County fairground, which are right there by the DuPage Center, DuPage County Center on County Farm Road, where they hold the DuPage County Fair. And previous to that, that was a test site where people could drive through and get tested. Well, now they're going to turn it into a vaccination site. So who do we call? Well, the county has a site that individuals can go to and register. Yet a lot of you have seen that site advertised in our Darien Direct Connect. But if you go to www.dupagehealth.org/covid19vaccine, it will take you to a site where you can register for the vaccine, for an appointment for the vaccine. Individuals should also be calling their primary care doctors to see if they can schedule an appointment. And they can also call Jewel, Osco, Mariano's, Myers, Walgreens and CVS. Now here in Darien, in South, South and in South Central will be vaccine sites. We will serve teachers, teaching staff in front. We will serve teachers, teaching staff, and frontline workers in the community as they service, which includes Darien. When we obtain more information on this, we will get that information out to you as soon as possible. And I can't say whether or not those sites will remain open for 65 and older or other populations. I can just tell you that right now, it will be teaching staff and frontline workers. The other thing is, we have an additional concern for those seniors who do not have computers and they have, do not have the luxury of electronic communications. And a lot of the seniors who call, who get ahold of me, they tell me they don't have a computer. They don't get direct connect. They're just wondering when they're going to get their vaccine. So we're reaching out to the township office to see if they can be of assistance in helping this population through the program. And in addition to that, the county is creating a program accessing, to bridge technology limitations and mobile clinics envisioned as a means to vaccinate residents with transportation limitations. So the county has also created a program, but we're hoping to work with the township. Now, if residents are not currently receiving our Darien Direct Connect, we ask that you sign up for our weekly newsletter. It will provide you with weekly updates regarding our programs, as well as information regarding COVID-19 and the county's vaccination program. Now, please understand, we're in phase 1B, 65 and older frontline workers. And again, if we were, if we were receiving 18,000 doses a week, that population could be vaccinated by, by probably the beginning of April. That means all of you who are in the 1864 population, you are in phase 1C. And we cannot get started on that group until we have an increase in the number of doses that we're receiving. And once we have to get through the 268,000 that are currently in the 1B category. So I realize there's a lot of frustration. People call me up and say, well, my friend in California, he's 55, he got his shot already. Why haven't we got our shot? Why don't you fire all the bums in DuPage County? These people don't know what they're, you know, and I get complaints about the Department of Health, and yet on a week-to-week basis, the plan is consistent, the plan appears to be working, it's the amount of doses that we need to get in order to ensure that we're going to be able to get vaccinations out to people. And believe me, I, I've had that frustration as well. I called Jewel, I registered through Jewel, and you can't get an appointment at Jewel through April. So I mean, there's a lot of people are doing the same thing. They're calling their primary care doctor, their primary care doctor is saying, call this number, call that number, I may not have the vaccine to give to you. While others are being told that they can get the vaccination through their primary care doctor. So is that the DuPage County's Health Department's fault? No, it's, it's the inconsistencies that exist in terms of how it's being administered by some of these other groups. That's, that's what the issue is. And it's the lack of doses that are available. So please be patient. DuPage County's plan is well thought out. And if we begin to receive larger amounts of doses, we'll get through the process more quickly. And I, you know, hopefully, I've provided some information tonight, which is going to help people. And I realize I didn't give you a telephone number to call, I didn't make assurances that you're going to get a vaccine next week or a shot next week. And I want you to know that there is a plan. And that plan can work if we're patient and if we get the doses that we need to get through the different groups that we have to vaccinate. So I want to thank everybody for their patience. Anybody have any questions for me? Okay. That takes us to the city's clerk's report. Joanna? Oh, Tom Belzak, I'm sorry, Tom.
Just out of curiosity, there, everything I've read is that there's a lot of people that are afraid to get the vaccine. So at, at what point, or is there a plan on saying, no one else in this group wants it anymore? I mean, you, you, you've used a number of 200 and some odd thousand dollars or 200,000 people that are, they're in the 1B group. How do they know when no one else wants it from the 1B group?
Well, Tom, what they're doing is, the Illinois Department of Public Health has a dashboard which shows a breakdown of all the vaccinations that have taken place in the county throughout the state of Illinois. And DuPage County has a similar dashboard. And the figure that I didn't give you is, we have, we have 43,000 healthcare professionals that were in the 1A group, and 80% of them have been vaccinated. But we're going to go to the one that also started administering to the 1B group, because now we've hit that 80% threshold. So DuPage County is going to follow the same procedure. And we see the percentages, we're at 60, 70%. They're going to, they'll start administering to the people in 1C as well. But if you go to the DuPage County website, oh, front website, you'll see that dashboard and it'll actually show you the vaccines that are going out, who's getting them. They're tracking it by gender, by zip code, all that. That data's all there. Can I help you out?
Yes.
Anything else? All right, now we'll go to our city clerk. Joanna?
I have a couple of items. The Darien offices will be closed on Monday, February 15th, in honor of President's Day. And our next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, February the 16th, here in the council chambers.
The administrator's report, Brian?
I have no report, Mayor.
All right, department head information and questions. We have Deputy Chief Jason Norton here tonight. If you have any questions for Jason, Dan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say just real briefly, with this weekend storm, as you could tell, a lot of residents have piled snow up against, you know, on each side of their driveways, which makes it a great opportunity for children to build forts. So just want to make sure everybody's, you know, somewhat conscious and parents, you know, make sure that you watch your children, especially if they're playing next to these forts adjacent to the street. And, you know, sometimes the plows do come by, and God forbid if one of these children are within there and a snowplow comes by and, and has the opportunity to collapse these forts that some children will build in there.
We also received some notice that if you have a fire hydrant on your property, if you could dig that fire hydrant out so that at least it's visible to the fire department.
Correct. Yes, that'd be greatly appreciated as well. You know, residents that are able to do so, we, we do ask of them to help us clear the fire hydrants. We are also in the process of clearing out fire hydrants, along with the fire department typically helps us along with that task. And, you know, right now, we're in the process of also clearing the sidewalks, which has been a little bit of a challenge with the amount of snow that happened at once.
Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, and Dan, we should probably also mention that it's important that residents do not blow the snow out into the middle of the street when they're clean, clearing their sidewalks and driveways.
That is correct, you know, and, and while we're done, we try to complete the operation during the late night hours, early morning hours. And yes, unfortunately, a lot of some snow does end up back in the driveway. So we, please, don't put the snow back in the street, because it does create a hazard, especially if it tends to thaw during the day and then free, refreezes at night, because we're not going to come back and basically clean that up. So, you know, when it's out there, it, it does become a hazard.
You can get ticketed for that, correct?
I was going to say, that is correct. And the, either we, the city staff will call the police department, will we do witness something in that effect. And residents are encouraged also to call on residents that are throwing the snow into the street.
Any questions for Dan or for Jason? Jason?
I have one thing, Mr. Mayor. Chief Thomas asked me to bring up, we have a traffic crash analysis for Cass Avenue and South Runage. He just wanted me to mention that, I believe Alderman Lustig had asked about that previously in the year. I'll send that out tomorrow to everyone on the board here. That way they can review that and ask some questions further, maybe next time around.
Thank you, Jason. Anything else for Jason? All right, we'll move on then to our treasurer's report. Treasurer Cornyn?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 202119, in the amount of $277,824.22 from the listed funds and payroll for the period ended January 28th, in the amount of $248,118.49, for a total to be approved of $525,942.71.
We have a motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions for the treasurer? If none, the role?
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Dowar?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Whiston?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant's been approved. Standing committee reports, do any of the aldermen have anything to offer the council regarding those committees? Alderman Sullivan?
Tonight's Admin Finance Committee was canceled, but we will be starting budgeting workshops for next fiscal year. The first one will be on Wednesday, February 17th at 6:30. I believe it'll be via Zoom. And then it'll be following the weeks after every Wednesday at 6:30. And the Economic Development Committee meeting is scheduled for this coming Thursday, February 4th at 7:00 PM.
Brian?
Mayor, one correction. The meetings, they're starting on a Wednesday because of the President's holiday, or President's Day holiday. Then they'll actually resume on Tuesdays after that. Our schedule, you know, will be posted on the website also.
Thanks, Brian. I mixed that up. That's what I meant.
Just to clarify things, I know a lot of you are probably anticipating when we might be going back to in-person meetings. I was going to offer any of you an opportunity to attend in person for our budget meetings. I know Alderman Sullivan will be present here in the chambers. If you feel comfortable coming in and participating for our budget meetings in person, you're welcome to be here. I'm also looking at the possibility of reinstituting in-person city council meetings beginning in March. I have not reached a definite decision on that, but I'd like to move forward then. But as far as the budget meetings are concerned, you are all invited to be here in person if you'd like. And for those that can't, we'll make accommodations for them. Any other questions? I see Treasurer Cornyn with us.
Yeah, I just want to announce the Police Pension Fund will be having their quarterly meeting this Thursday night, February 4th, 7 o'clock. I believe it's via Zoom, but there is availability across the street in the police training room. I guess if anybody shows up in person, which nobody usually does, but it'll be Thursday night.
Anyone else? Alderman Kenny?
Yes, sir. Police Committee meeting will be scheduled for 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 16th via Zoom, pending agenda items.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak, are you scheduled this month for municipal services?
We are tentatively scheduled for the 22nd. We'll know for sure on the 16th when we have our next meeting.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, John. Anything else? All right. Questions, it takes us to questions and comments, agenda related, and again, if no one here in the audience, so we go to old business, there being none, we go to our consent agenda. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance, amending the Darien City Code for Parking Restrictions, 931, a text amendment on vehicle idling. Item B, consideration of a motion to review and approve architectural and design guidelines for commercial and office developments. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution awarding a contract to Home with Tree Care Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $147,000 for the city's 2021-22 pre-trimming and removal program. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Rags Electric Incorporated for the 21 Street Light Maintenance Contract beginning May 1st, 2021, through April 30th, 2022. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing following private property, rear yard, storm, water management assistance projects, and they're listed there, items 1 through 10. Hinsbrook Avenue, 1517, 2573rd Street, 81871st Street, and 700911 Sierra Court, 7914, 7918 Adams Street, and 7917 Pine Court, 8360 to 8372 Kramer Lane, 805 to 809 to 8, plus 813 Sawyer Road, 1530 Clermont Drive and 1601 Holly Avenue, 168618 Maple Avenue, 8607 to, I believe, 8619 Clifford Road, and 8509 to 11 Glen Air Road. Those are the 10 projects. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract extension with Benler Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $221,250 for the 2021 Crackfield Program. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor's approval to enter into a five-year engineering agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering for Professional Services related to a controlled wetland management firm and vegetation management at the Dale Road Basin in an amount not to exceed $27,750. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor's approval to enter into a five-year, it was, I'm sorry, that was repeated. Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement for professional services between the city of Darien and Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the Terre Haute Management and Monitoring of 10 Acres of Wetland and Natural Areas within the Terre Haute subdivision. Item I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the 2021 Street Maintenance Project between the city of Darien and Brothers Asphalt Caving Incorporated, following schedule of pricing base bid, $1,218,851.55. Alternative 1, catching, $89,100. Alternative 2, aggregate shoulders, $24,000. Alternative 3, 67, alignment project, $96,818.75, for a total of $1,428,770.30. And item J, consideration of a motion to approve the recommendation to release executive session minutes that no longer require confidentiality. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda? All right, Alderman Dowar, seconded by Alderman Gustafson. Ald, in the role?
Dowar?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Whiston?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The consent agenda has been approved. Takes us to new business, there's one item. Consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving the purchase and installation of a new server and an upgrade to the hardware and software to 2021 standards in an amount not to exceed $50,000 of AIS Incorporated. Motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any discussion? Alderman, Alderman Vaughn?
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity to speak with John from AIS, the consultant, along with Brian Vanna, our city administrator. It looks like, when I first saw this, I, it seemed like they were just giving us a server for $50,000, and that kind of alarmed me. I was like, $50,000 for a server, no way. But after talking to John, what it looks like is that they're giving us a full upgrade on our infrastructure. They're not only replacing, giving, getting us a new server, but the software and the hardware that comes with it, they're going to give us, they're beefing up our server so that we can be able to be in good shape for the next seven or 10 years. So we shouldn't see this item on any of our packets, you know, for seven or 10 years. So this is, this is definitely something that I think that's needed. I think before, the city was running out of server space and disk space. So this kind of beefs up our server and our infrastructure. of beefs up our server and our infrastructure, where we won't have, run into those problems where we're running out of space. And, and with all the new components that we're getting, you know, with cameras and, and, and other, other things, that's, that's constantly grabbing data from us or putting data on our servers, this should be suffice for the next seven or ten years. And actually, it looks like we're coming under budget as well to forty-three thousand dollars. So as long as they stay on track with the implementation plan, I think, you know, we'll be coming under that, that fifty thousand dollars to forty-three thousand. So it was really, you know, so I think it's a good thing.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Brian?
Yeah, if Alderman Vaughn could just touch on, there's two parts to this, obviously the hardware and the labor, and we reviewed labor rates, and John gave you a good idea of, you know, what they're looking at. So again, I just want to make sure the council's confident that those labor rates are, they're, they're in line with where they should be.
They gave, they gave us a flat rate, so that's, that was a good thing.
Lester, thanks for spending that time to, to, to give that, appreciate it.
You're welcome, you're welcome, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, if none, then the roll.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Sullivan? Dowar?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The item has been approved. It takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any of the aldermen have anything they want to share with the council? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a second to thank city staff and planning and zoning for putting together the architectural standards for the city of Darien. That's a goal I've had for, for many years, and through council support and your support and everyone else, that we put together a plan that puts together a cohesive look for buildings that are going to be built, and the city of Darien provide guidelines for the next century, and keeps us updated and competitive to other buildings that are being put around us. I think it's a great job, I'm glad that went through, a lot of work went in on city staff, they studied neighboring towns, what they did, and incorporate the best practices here for the city of Darien, so I'm really proud that we got that done, so thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, this is just a question for, for Dan. You know, I saw that there were water tank inspections that were done. Can you kind of just give us an overview of what the results were, and if there's any need to put budget numbers now into next year's, next year's plan, and what the timing of next paintings and stuff?
Sure, and then for the rest of the city council members, over the weekend, Alderman Gustafson had emailed me in regards to water tank inspections. Every year, we complete a fifteen, it's basically a fifteen-point test or survey that a company comes out and basically assesses our tanks. What they look for, number one, is cathodic protection. I don't have the whole list in front of me here, but there's a series of things that they look at. Again, one of those is cathodic protection, without not getting into what each individual item does, that is one component, they look for inside the tank when they're up there to see if there's any signs of deterioration, deterioration potentially being rust and/or paint that's flaking, or any potential signs of, I'll call it, deterioration in general. Also, sometimes what will happen is the roof will start to dimple, so they look at the roof, the roof structure, so on and so forth. Most of the reports they came, the reports that came back on the three tanks, there is a, additional inspections that need to be looked at. We did put those items into the budget already. Some of those items are, in which case, they actually send divers down into the tank to determine whether or not the paint is still, if the adhesion on the paint is still good, there's a combination of what's referred to as a zinc primer and a paint that's FDA-approved, so on and so forth. Like I said, I won't get into the details of all that, but yes, we do have items that are going to be upcoming for the budget in regards to the water tank system.
What about timing of additional paintings? When are we, when are we going to get scheduled to get hit with that?
That, really, we're not going to see the painting come up unless there's something detrimental to a report that is brought up. Not that I see that, I will, probably, next year, we'll begin to budget for the three-year outlook in regards to the painting of the water towers.
So you're happy with what the results were of the, the inspections?
At this point, yes.
But we still have some to go?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah, Dan, you are requesting the budget, and we had it in last year and ended up taking it out, cleaning of the exterior of the tanks also. You know, occasionally you'll look up and you'll see the tanks are dirty or moldy, and that's exterior, and that's one of the things that will be coming forward in terms of the tanks, this upcoming budget request.
That's true, and that's a great example, that's one of the items that they'll also review, our company or consultant will review.
Anything else? I'd like to mention that, again, you know, city hall is now open. We've been locked for a while, means residents would come into our foyer and drop things off in the drop box. The door is now unlocked, see, city hall is open for people to come in and come to the front window. There's also an opportunity for them to buy their twenty-twenty-one vehicle sticker through the Darien Rotary, which is available here at city hall. It's a donation of at least three dollars, we're hoping that people take advantage of that and provide the Rotary with the funds that they utilize for their backpack program, where twelve hundred children are fed every six weeks on a Friday afternoon. So we're looking forward to people having, now have any option to actually come in and buy those stickers, it's just a reminder that those stickers are available. If there's nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks, we'll see you, take care and be safe.
Good night, everyone.
Night.